Okay, we're getting everybody back. Good. Hello. Good, good.
Mr. Chair, I think you have it. We have a quorum.
Do we have a quorum?
Let's see, we have Natalie, we have-
I see Bill, Jim.
Bill is there, Jim. So yeah, we got it.
Is Chris coming or not? Do we know?
As far as I know, but he hasn't indicated that he's not.
Okay. Well, we'll get Roland. Then anyway, thank you everyone for your patience. Well, the staff dealt with the technical issues that they were facing with the scheduling. We really appreciate it and apologize to everyone for the delay. At this time, I'd like to call the order, this meeting of the mayor, town and mayor planning board. Thirty-nine on one twelve twenty-one. With noting that we have, this is Andrew DeMoor, vice chair in lieu of Greg DeZolo, the chairman who is not able to be here this evening. I'd like to also note that we're going to curtail the agenda. None of the public hearings I'm talking about, but we're only going to address because of this delay. Item number three, the A and R for one seventeen Concord Street, the manor crossing. Items and the firehouse. There won't be anything else this evening. So with that being said, I'd like to move directly to agenda item number three, the A and R for one seventeen. Make sure to flip back to it so I get it right. For seventeen Congress Street, map six, parcel eleven. If the applicant is here, please take it away.
This is Doug Andrysek, Andrysek Land Surveying, behalf of the applicant. Properties located the corner of Concord Street and Ethel and Circle. There's an existing house on the property, house number one seventeen. Our quest is to divide the property into two lots. Lot one A has over twenty thousand square feet of area. And over a hundred and fifty feet of frontage along Concord Street. Lot one B would be a lot with no house on it. It also has in excess of twenty thousand square feet of area, one hundred sixty-three feet of frontage on Ethel and Circle. We also have a parcel Z with just under two thousand square feet. We've noted that that is a non-buildable, not a buildable lot. And that will be conveyed to in the butter along Ethel and Circle.
Okay. Bill, I think, you know, I've read, you know, reviewed all the materials, staff report, etc. Are there any butters here to comment on this particular issue or other members of the public? Does not appear-
Andrew, Andrew, could we have the staff report, please?
Certainly. Bill?
Yeah, it's, I'll pull it up.
Well, Bill's doing that. Let me just informally ask members of the board, are you going to have additional questions on this, Bill and Natalie? Or have you reviewed the materials and?
Everything looked fine to me. My only question was what was being done with that property Z, but it seems like it's just going to be. Transferred to in a better or something, so.
Okay. Andrew, my through everything. I just wanted, you know, kind of, I'm just mindful of the time.
All right, here's, here, Mr. Chair, here is the. Staff report, I think the first part is just basically what, but here's the dimensional requirements and the changes right here. I think that'll probably. This has been through all the departments, departments have no problem with this. It meets all the criteria for an A and R and staff recommends. That the board finds consistent with the criteria for A and R.
Jim, did you have specific questions you want to do address?
No, I want to see the report, that's all.
Thank you. All right. So be that there are no-
Andrew, Andrew.
Yes, please, Bill.
Related to the staff report, I'm just curious if because of parcel Z, there's anything different we would have to make a finding on or make a motion on. Because it, you know, it obviously does not meet standard dimensions. Is it contingent on something? Is it a condition? I don't really understand what we do with the.
Typically with Bill, we do that, it's noted on the plan that it is a non-buildable lot and on this. Let's see, does this indicate it's non-buildable?
If we look on note number two, says parcel Z is not a buildable lot, but it's to be adjoined to land a party.
So the big thing is just that if somebody, you know, down the line was looking at this, they'd be able to clearly, you know, say, no, that's not. And then once it's, you said you're planning to convey it to a butter. And that'll become just part of that.
And then will no longer be a separate lot, it'll be part of their lot.
Correct, but the two parcels that are created will conform to our zoning bylaws.
Right. Now, to Bill's point though, I don't think we, there's anything to condition though, right? Because there's no decision in this case, it's merely stating that yes, this meets requirements.
Correct. Really what you're doing is you're standing, it doesn't constitute a subdivision and it's entitled-
Right, that's, that's more precise, you're correct, Bill, thank you. Does that address your concerns?
Probably, I'll just see what he has to give us for motions and should be fine.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to move that, to find that this does in fact meet the requirements of the A and R regulation bylaw. And. Make a motion to that regard. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
You gotta do it by roll.
Yeah, I gotta do it by roll, that's fine.
All right, we'll do it by roll. Bill, I'm just doing it from the top of my screen down. Yes. Natalie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself as a yes as well, so that's unanimous. That's the end of that, thank you very much.
Thanks. And that, for the record, that was Andrew made the motion, Natalie made a second.
Correct, and it was unanimous vote. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, moving on to. Sorry, let me get back to my agenda here. We've identified number four on the manor crossing. I think need to hear, we're going to have some folks here to report out, Bill, on some findings.
Yes.
We proceed with that.
Right, just to refresh, the board, we had looked at this in the last meeting. There is an issue raised about delivery hours, which is not going to really be discussed at this point. But the other issue was raised was a trash compactor and several butters had. Reported. Levels of noise. And at different times of the day. A number of times that it was being switched on. Staff met with the. Developer, the capital group. And they brought out an audio engineer and. Did the sounding reports that they're going to, they have their engineer tonight, it's going to make a presentation. I think that's pretty much everything and there, there is a, in your board docs, you'll see the report provided by Tech Environmental. And it's. Dated January eleventh. And at this point, I guess I would. Probably be best to turn it over to the applicant to, let's see. Danny had these findings. There we go. Okay, there we are, okay. Yeah, if you would, go ahead and take it, that would be good, Bill.
Danny Ruiz, Capable Properties. As Bill said previously, we met last week behind market basket on Thursday. We had our audio engineer Patricia Rosa and it was also Bill Memzer and Justin DiMarco. When we were out there, we had the sound engineers take three different readings of the compactor at different. Different distances from the compactor that are shown in the. Report at thirty feet, sixty feet and ninety feet and. So I will turn this over to Mark Wallace so we can actually get more in depth to the report.
Just for the record, I'd like to note that Chris has now joined. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. For the record, my name is Mark Wallace with Tech Environmental. I am a vice president of the firm. I'm also the project manager for this particular project. So tech was retained by Capital Group to perform sound measurements behind the market basket. It was our understanding of the town wanted Capital Group to perform continuous forty-eight hour sound measurements at the property line behind the market baskets. The goal of the sound monitoring was to document sound levels and durations associated with the waste compactor operations. A sound engineer met with two representatives from the town, as mentioned. And with Mr. Wees from Capital Group. Last Thursday to observe the short-term sound measurements of the waste compactor and set up a long-term sound analyzer. To collect one-minute measurements over that forty-eight hour period, which began on Friday, January eighth and continued through Saturday, January ninth. Before jumping into sort of the presentation of the procedures and results. Give a little bit of introductory how sound is measured, it's measured on a decibel scale. All sounds originate with a source, whether it's a human voice, vehicles on the roadway or an airplane overhead. The decibel scale is logarithmic to accommodate the wide range of sound intensities to which the human ear is subjected to. On this scale, the quietest sound we can hear is zero decibels and while the loudest is a hundred and twenty decibels. And for every ten decibel increase is a perceived doubling of loudness. Most sounds we hear are typically in the thirty to ninety decibel range. A community noise studies and regulations are typically measured on a, what we call an A weighted scale. We're measuring sound pressure levels as this approximates the response that the human ear experiences in everyday life. So some examples of sound levels, a quiet suburban area, sound levels would range between forty and forty-five decibels. Say a freight train that you might hear in the distance might be fifty decibels. Two people having a conversation, a normal conversation would speak at about sixty-five decibels. And if you're standing near the edge of a roadway, a car passing by would be about seventy-five decibels. A truck passing by would be about eighty decibels. Now, the, we measure sound with using different types of metrics. The purposes of this study, we. Call the LEQ or the. And essentially, this is the average sound level that the, that someone would actually hear. So as mentioned earlier, we met on last Thursday, January seventh, to perform the short-term sound measurements of the waste compactor. At distances of thirty feet, sixty-six feet and ninety feet away. From the compactor. This was in consultation with Capital Group and with the town. If you flip to, in your report, if you flip to figure one, the red dot indicates the location of the compactor behind the, behind the market basket. And the three green dots represent the locations where the short-term sound measurements were taken. The long-term sound analyzer was set up to collect, as I said earlier, one-minute measurements over forty-eight hour period. We set the meter to measure one-minute measurements because of the fact that the compactor runs at these very short durations. And so we wanted to be able to pick up those, those sound levels during that forty-eight hour period. So as you would expect, over forty-eight hours, one-minute measurements, you're getting somewhere in the order of twenty-eight hundred and eighty measurements over that time period. We also measured. One-minute measurements of the waste compactor, as I said, from those three different locations. And one of the purposes of doing that, not only did it was to get some information about the sound levels from the waste compactor. But also to provide what we call a fingerprint of sound levels, because we weren't doing attended monitoring, we were doing unattended monitoring for the forty-eight hour period. So when we had to go back to look at the data, we wanted to be able to say whether that was, you know, something from the waste compactor or for something else. So at the end of the program, when we picked up our long-term sound analyzer yesterday morning. We followed up with some additional one-minute measurements of some other activities that may go on behind the, the market basket, which would be related to passing trucks, idling trucks. Them backing up and unloading activities, again, to give us another fingerprint of the sound levels that are associated with that. So when we're looking at the whole data set, we could. Sort of take those sound measurements out of that analysis when we're looking to try to determine what the sound levels were from the compactor and how many times that actually occurred during the forty-eight hour period. So in our report. There are four figures, figures two through five, which present time plots of the one-minute LEQ measurements. And then for each figure represents a twelve-hour time block from twelve AM to eleven fifty-nine AM. And then again, from twelve PM to eleven fifty-nine PM. The short-term fingerprint sound levels from the compactor from the three different distances range from fifty-seven point six decibels at location three, the furthest location away ninety feet. To sixty-four point three at location one. And the short-term fingerprint sound levels for the trucking activities that we measured at location two, which was essentially representing the property line location. Range from sixty-six to seventy-one decibels. So because we, as I mentioned, we have so many data points that we're looking at and trying to put this in some way, in some kind of context to show this in the graphs. We weren't able to sort of show where the, where the compactor events were occurring in those graphs. So I prepared a couple of tables, tables one and two, which summarize approximately a number of likely waste compactor operations. And the sound levels for each hour for each day. And I'll talk about that in a moment, but. Going through the four figures. Figure two is the one-minute sound measurements for Friday, January eighth, again, from twelve AM to eleven fifty-nine AM. The. Vertical axis is the sound levels from thirty-five to eighty-five decibels and the. And the, the hours or minutes of time are on the horizontal axis. These are in ten-minute blocks, just so we can fit that on the graph. So you can see that the nighttime and early morning hours, the sound levels are in the low forties, which is what I mentioned earlier, what we would expect for a quiet suburban area. And then around seven o'clock in the morning, you could see that the sound levels start to increase quite a bit. Where they basically range in the mid-fifties and sixties and then on, on some occasions reach up to seventy-five and in fact, up to eighty, over eighty decibels in one event. If you flip to figure three. This is a continuation of the Friday data, again, starting at noon time and going until eleven fifty-nine PM. You can see that there's still quite a bit of sound levels that are in the mid-sixties. And raging up almost close to seventy-five decibels during the afternoon. And as you get towards the evening, say, seven thirty, eight o'clock at night, the sound levels tend to. Reduce down closer back to the ambient conditions. Figure four is the Saturday information, again, starting at twelve AM and you can see a similar pattern where it's quiet at night in the low forties. And then right around seven o'clock in the morning, activity begins and you can see that the sound levels. During the morning hours here are in the, you know, mid-fifties to sixties and reach up to, at several occasions, up to close to seventy-five decibels. And then the final chart is the second half of the day on Saturday. Again, similar pattern where we're seeing. Sound levels that are significantly higher during the daytime during activities that are occurring. And in fact, there are some periods of time, particularly in the three o'clock hour, where there were sound levels as high as eighty-five decibels almost. So something obviously going on at that point in time. And then later on in the day, it sort of reduces down after, say, about eight, very thirty at night. The next two pages of my report have the tables, table one shows the potential waste compactor sound levels. So this is a summation of what we think were the likely events of the compactor operating. Where the sound levels were. In the fifty-five to sixty decibel range. You can see that the number of times a compactor likely operated. The first thing in the morning, there, you know, there are five to six events that are occurring. Again, these are one-minute timeframes that we're talking about. And then they peak in the two to say five o'clock in the afternoon where we have one-minute events of ranging from twenty-three to twenty-nine times. And then the final. Table, table two shows the activities for Saturday. A far fewer events that were occurring. It looks like they actually peaked at ten to eleven o'clock in the morning. Again, similar sound levels in the fifty-three to sixty decibel range. And the, like I said, it probably peaked around the nine to ten o'clock in the morning, I'm sorry, ten to eleven o'clock in the morning timeframe. And then during the rest of the. Single events that were going. That's the summation of my, of my report. And. I welcome any kind of questions you may have on, on the procedures we did or any other results.
Thank you very much. I note that this is dated the eleventh, so I just want to add, have you had a chance to look at this or is that something you have not had the time to do this yet?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed this. I have not had the opportunity to have my sound specialist review this information. And more importantly, maybe compare it to the past. Sound study that was done during the permitting phase, if you remember, there was, there was a study conducted in which we were trying to determine, I believe, the height of the fence. Around the facility, whether it was eight or twelve feet, which we ended up approving the twelve-foot fence. So my goal is to have someone review that, but that has not happened yet, it won't happen for a few days.
That's okay. I understand, it was dated yesterday. Are there any comments that you do want to make this time or should we just reserve that for a later time?
I guess the only comment, and maybe Mr. Wallace said it in a different way, but is there a way to, for the, for the public and for the board to understand like what is considered. An ambient temperature, Andy, temperature, excuse me, ambient noise level where nothing's going on. If I interpret these graphs, I mean, am I to interpret that that's somewhere in the forty to forty range of decibel level?
That's correct. As those charts show, particularly at night, the, the ambient conditions were probably in the low forties. During the daytime, they might be in the mid-forties when there are no activities going on.
So that's, that's the only comment that I have at this point.
Decibels look strange, you're not used to thinking about. So it, you know, the idea that. They, you know, the logarithmic scale and the floor are both a little on. All right, thank you. I'd like to, I know that we have some butters here to comment as well, so. I'll get to you in just one moment, I want to ask if any members of the board have any questions or comments at this time, of course, you can reserve it and we can come back to it after. Reach in, the butters have a chance, but I wanted to just pause and ask the board if they have any questions at this time.
Andrew, I got three or four when you're ready.
Then TM right up, Bill.
Okay, so. Couple of questions semi-related to the compactor, but. Mr. Wallace, I note that there are spikes in the sound readings, both mornings at like one o'clock and four, four thirty, five o'clock. But you're confident that has nothing to do with the compactor, you're confident that's something else?
As best we can tell, that it doesn't seem to be related to the compactor.
Okay. And I think you said that you were doing your sound footprints or whatever you call it and. You had the dumpster at like fifty-seven plus or something like that and you had the delivery trucks at sixty-six to seventy-one, is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, just so I note for the rest of the board, looking at the June two thousand seventeen memo. The predicted maximum sound levels from those delivery trucks were going to be forty-nine to sixty-one. And if I understand my logarithmic correctly, that means that the actual noise level is twice what was anticipated in twenty seventeen from trucks. But getting back to the compactor. From what I know from researching, some compactors are quieter than others. What kind of compactor is this? Is this a hydraulic round or is this an electric auger?
Marathon compactor. They're hydraulic rams. That's what the supermarket industry uses. That's what we've used forever.
Okay, so I note that from what I've seen, that the electric auger system has a shorter cycle time and is half the noise level of hydraulic rams.
I've never seen an electric auger system. I'm not saying it's not out there, I'm just saying that in our industry and what we've used the last. Forty, fifty years has been a hydraulic ram produced by Marathon.
Okay, and my final question about the specific compactor there, I know that some compactors can be monitored remotely. Is this one monitored remotely or is this just operating?
Monitored.
Without monitoring.
Monitored remotely for what?
Well, I mean, they got systems where you can figure out, you know, how loaded it is and, you know, how many times it's running and, you know, it's just.
I'm familiar with those systems and no, it's not monitored remotely, it's monitored, we, we. My department, the facilities department. Schedules, the compact is for picks based on a lot of different factors. You know, cube going into the store and volume of store.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, last question for Mr. Wallace, table one. Estimates, educated estimates of how many times this thing's running? I mean, could it really run twenty-nine times in one hour?
Again, that's, it may not be clearly evident, but this is one-minute measurement, so there are twenty-nine measurements there that. Seem to indicate that the compactor was in operations. It's not saying that it ran twenty-nine times.
Oh, it could be, all right, so it could be a cycle that is counted more than once.
That's correct, right.
May I butt in for one second, please? That, that compactor that is the, the other one that was tested, that is the cardboard compactor. That has a minute and a half cycle to it from start to finish. So I was gonna question the twenty-nine hits as well. It's more probable, it's probably, I don't see how they could run twenty-nine times in a, in a one-hour period.
That's the, you know, for, for us, when we do these kinds of measurements, that's the sort of the downside of doing unattended monitoring, which is very.
Understood.
Meter and let it run. That's why we were trying to do the fingerprint approach to, to get that. You know, when you do attended monitoring, you can then have somebody that's out there observing the activities. You know, when you do attended monitoring, you can then have somebody that's out there observing the activities. Sort of like what our engineer was doing when we were doing the short term measurements. And, you know, if someone were to be out there for extended period of time could indicate, you know, what certain, certain things are occurring and at that particular moment when they're taking the measurements. And then that you can document that more, you know, more accurately.
I'm good for now, Andrew. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of follow ups based on what Bill just said. So Mark, the sampling was one minute, so it's every one minute it takes a sample of what length?
What length?
Yeah, it's just a second snapshot.
No, so the, so the sound meter is collecting measurements every second, you know, and actually even more refined than that. We had set the meter to, to collect what, what we call one minute, you know, one minute measurement. So it's a dirt that, that measurement is of the total sound in that one minute period of time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So because of the fact that the, that, that the, you know, compactor, as mentioned earlier, runs for a minute or a minute and a half. We thought the best way to sort of document the activities was to set the meter to, to this short duration monitoring program.
So in theory, you would, you know, the number of times could be even half of that twenty nine, which still seems excessive to me, but.
Right. And, and again, for us, it was looking, you know, we, we talked about these LEQ sound level measurements, but we looked at all the metrics to sort of try to define when we thought this was related specifically to the compactor and not something else going on. But again, without, you know, having sort of eyeballs and ears, so to speak, to be there to document that, you know, this was our best approach to doing that.
Right. I hear you. And let me just say, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with the fact that this is, there's a lot of, I think in this, we think this and, you know, kind of get work built into this because of the nature of the monitoring being unattended. But it makes it very difficult to kind of figure out what's really going on. One other point I wanted to just follow up with you, Bill. At the beginning of your comments, you said you were referencing anticipated sound levels from the decision. Was that from the original decision on Parker?
It was a document that's in board docs. It's the, it's a June seventeen, twenty seventeen memo about sound fence effectiveness.
Can we speak to that?
It was used, I don't know, at some point during the permitting, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll build a picture. I, I, I'm not sure where Mr. Crenshaw found that number, but I have that report in front of me. And a couple of points I just want to make. The, the sound testing that we did was on the project side of the fence, not on the neighbor's side of the fence. And if you read that report, then Mr. Crenshaw is referencing the June twenty second, two thousand seventeen. Most of the sound that's occurring on our side of the fence is under what the report in the two thousand seventeen says with the fence. So we are, we're almost or at the sound level under the report that says on the other side of the fence, but yet we took the reports on our side of the fence. So if you extrapolate that, if you take that and you go on the other side of the fence, we are way under what this report says in two thousand seventeen.
So you're saying it's sort of an apples and oranges comparison here?
Correct.
So Andrew, you can just bring up that memo. It's just, it's item E under the board docs and I'm looking at page two and man, the sentence just says Detling Road properties.
And I read the same thing. This is the June seventeenth, two thousand seventeen memo from Capital Group. No, sorry, to Capital Group from Tech Environmental.
And if I could point out, the buildings did not exist at the time. They were, these were theoretical estimates and they were theoretical estimates based on a design that later was significantly changed by adding truck bays and adding a cover over the truck bays, which would have very much changed the patterns of sound movement in that area. I don't know how a two thousand seventeen theoretical report about sound movement for a differently designed building is relevant to a discussion around sounds for an unapproved trash compactor.
No, my point was simply that the expected sound levels in two thousand seventeen were half that that's happening now.
No, and I appreciate that point, Bill, but I think just sort of trying to say like, well, we're under those estimates like that. We are over, I hear you, Bill, and I just like these are different things, tracked noise and an unapproved trash compactor.
If I may, it, it would be helpful for me as a board member to receive technical review from VHB on this. And Wayne, I would appreciate it if you could roll in these other considerations that are being talked about more globally. Just to provide context, Wayne, that would be very helpful for me as a board member.
Of course.
But I, for me, just to be clear, I don't see how we can, until we have technical review. Sorry, Wayne, I, I cut you off there for a second. But if, without technical review, I don't see how we can proceed much further with any type of ruling or agreement on this.
And, and let me just expand on Chris's point there, Wayne. In your estimation, would, you know, would it be reasonable to request attended monitoring in order to actually have a, a real picture of what's going on? Because, you know, to me, there's a lot of unknowns built into this information.
That's an interesting comment, Mr. Chairman. I think the board needs to decide whether that's something that they want the applicant to do. I'm, I'm not prepared to make that recommendation yet until I have further technical advice from my colleague.
Okay. And fair enough, fair enough. I understand, you know, we're all working, you're working in a deficit of information and time. So I just wanted to ask.
Yep. Fair question.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? Mr. Crenshaw, yeah, Mr. Crenshaw indicated that the twelve foot fence was based upon sound that is twice, it's twice as high now as it was then. In other words, the assessment that you use to calculate what size fence we should have to keep the noise, the noise down is twice what it was when the decision was made to make a twelve foot fence.
I think the challenge is measurements are, are in two different places. And, you know, sound attenuates over distance.
Okay. So and, and I guess another point of clarification, in the study, it indicates that this fifty DBAs is equivalent to a freight train you hear in the distance. Now, is it a mile away? Is it a hundred yards away? Cause I look at the compactor volume, the sound at fifty eight point sixty. That's higher than a freight train you would hear in the distance.
But lower than conversation.
Lower than a conversation. How far away is that freight train?
I would say it's probably about a mile away.
Okay. So we hear, the, the sound we're hearing is, is the sound of a freight train a little bit higher than you, than a freight train in the distance.
Yeah, right.
Would you argue that that's rather loud?
It's, it's all depends upon, it's like a nuisance condition, right? So it depends on what the change in sound level is. So if we're talking about sound levels in the fifties and the backgrounds in the forties, that's a, that's a significant change in sound. Someone would perceive.
Is it an increase in sound, increase in volume?
Right. That's correct, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please, Chris.
We, these, this discussion would definitely be helped with technical review. And what I would propose is that we receive public comments so that we can see how if there's anything else we can proceed towards.
Yeah, it's, you're thinking exactly as I.
Otherwise, I would propose that we close this, this portion.
I agree.
I don't, I don't want to cut off public comment. I want.
Oh, no, not at all.
No, you won't.
What I'm trying to do is that we really need technical review before we can.
Yes, I agree. Phil, hold on.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask a question. I just, I want clarification. So we, what we do not have, as far as I can tell from this, is measurements of the sound levels at Detling Road. We have measurements at thirty, sixty six and ninety feet from the compactor as marked on figure one in the report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We do not have measurements from Detling Road.
That's correct.
All right. So I think we're lacking a few pieces of information. But one, we need the technical review, as Chris points out. And that will take, you know, Wayne's guys some time. Two, I think that we should discuss whether or not we need to have attended measurements in order to really understand what's happening because quite frankly, these graphs tell you almost nothing. I know they tell you what the levels of sound, but they don't tell you what they are. And thirdly, you know, I think we need to have measurements that are from Detling Road. You know, in addition to these others, because we can't get a clear picture of what the real circumstances are without that information. In my opinion. But now I'd like to turn it to other butters or comments from the public.
I, I have a question and I have a comment. My question is for Mr. Wallace. Is it fair to assume that times when the sound is spiking over sixty decibels so that you're presuming that a truck is in the area or some other louder noise? That it's possible that the compactor could concurrently be running, but you're not able to see that from your data. So actually, the frequency of the compactor running could be greater than represented.
That's correct. Right. I mean, we, there, there could be some overlap in there. But what we tried to do at the time was try to at least try to single out when we thought it was just singly the, the compactor itself. But there could be times I agree that, that there could have been both going on simultaneously.
And then I'd also like to observe that some people have commented that the data is represented, over represents the frequency of cycles. But I would, I would like to put forth that the frequency of cycles is not the matter at hand for the butters. It's the amount of minutes there is noise being made by a piece of equipment that was not approved. And so it really doesn't matter if it's five, five minute cycles or twenty five separate minutes of noise. It's all just twenty five minutes of noise, if you know what, if, if you understand what I'm saying. So the, the length of the cycle may be, like, it's not really relevant. What's showing in the data is that there are some hours where that noise is being recorded for half of that hour. And whether that's broken up in little cycles or not, it's still a lot of noise to live next to.
I would also like to, I would also like to make a comment. Up until probably about a week ago, the volume coming from that compactor is probably twice what it is based on this study. Recently, I'd say probably a few days ago, there was a mechanism placed over the, over the engine. Basically a muffler. So this information that we have in front of us is sound based on having a muffler placed over the engine of the compactor. So let's take that muffler off for a moment. And this volume is two or three times what you would see. Now, I don't know why you would measure something based on having a muffler over the mechanism, over the engine. That definitely skews these numbers very dramatically. Because as I said, up until about a week ago, the volume was unbearable.
That, that's, that brings up a question for me. Has there been any modifications since or during testing?
Before testing.
Chris, so Bill reached out to us maybe about a month ago, saying that he had got a couple of calls from some of the director partners on Detling that the, there was a noise out there. I went out there on several occasions and witnessed that when the compactor was running, it was a loud banging noise. So there was something wrong with the compactor. I contacted Norman from Market Basket. He had the compact company go out and take a look at it. And there was an issue with the pump. There was an issue with some sort of loose mechanism where it was banging. They replaced those. And in addition to, they installed a insulated sound enclosure over the motor. This, and, and it's, it's a electric motor, not a gas motor, so it's not a muffler. It's just an insulated enclosure over the motor, which reduces the sound. And that's gonna stay on there. We're not gonna take it off.
Thank you.
That they have put on that motor is a bunch of pieces of plywood. It could not look more temporary and flimsy, although it did temporarily muffle the sound a bit. And so one of the things, and I recognize you're not really hearing this issue tonight, but I will bring it up at a subsequent meeting, that I hope that we are working towards a system where there will be, if the compactor is allowed to stay, that there will be regular scheduled noise monitoring of it. Because as we know, equipment has a way of increasing in noise over the length of its life. And so it needs to be regularly assessed. Whatever the decibels, if any, you all allow this thing to make. It needs to be frequently assessed or regularly assessed that it's not getting louder over time. Again, this was not approved on the plans.
It's also amazing the amount of detail that went into the plans. Plants were identified, types of stones were identified. This big block behind Market Basket, a compactor that wasn't approved, was not identified. And that's very curious.
Mr. Chair, may I, Mike, I've, I have to weigh in here.
Go ahead, Bill.
Two things. First of all, I think we, we've got the issues that have to be examined. And I think that I have one question for the engineer, for Mr. Wallace. And I also have a video that's on there that the board would like to see. We shot video with sound. It's on the board docs, both before the structure was placed over it, the cover and without, just so we have a context about what we're talking about. With that, if the board would like me to run that, I'll share a screen.
Please do.
Okay. And the first one I'll put on is the prior to the adjustment. Let's see if I get this to work. Yeah. That was with the, the adjustment. This is when I was out there on the day that the sound was monitored.
Are you trying to share a screen, Bill?
Are you trying to, because I'm not hearing or seeing.
So you guys, I used to hear the sound. That was the sound that we hear twenty plus times a day. That sound, and it's longer than that most of the time. Twenty times a day, you hear that whining sound. Every that, the, the trucks still have their beepers going off when they go backwards. That's supposed to have been shut off, but that still happens. So that's what we're complaining about is the noise constantly hearing that whining noise all the time. And think about it, we're not even outside yet. Come the spring or summer, it's gonna drive us up a wall hearing that. So that's what the sound was. Come out and hang out for a few hours and listen to it. You'll go crazy.
Okay. First of all, I didn't hear anything because.
Yeah, neither did I.
So.
Cause you're not used to what the sound is, that's why.
No, no.
Didn't play.
So please, please, just, well.
Bill's sound didn't play.
Sound didn't play?
Play.
Now, did that, did that show or it was just the sound?
It's just the sound.
Oh. Why it's not sharing?
Can, can somebody help me understand why volume setting would have to be at a hundred percent to get the actual sound?
And that actually depends on what speakers you're using and what computer.
Yeah.
There's.
Oh, there it is. Now we see it.
And it's impossible to tell the actual volume. This is kind of worthless. I mean, I'm not meaning to disparage the effort that went into it, but it's given the differences in technology and everything else, it's very difficult to have, draw any conclusions from that at all.
Okay, the second question I have, if I may, Mr. Chair, is from Mr. Wallace. Is the 2017 reports are, are they relevant here or not? Or is there, what can we draw from them? Is there anything that the board can build from, from the information? They were done, I think you did them as well, correct?
Our company did. I was not involved with that study at the time. The only, I mean, that was specific to truck activities, I believe, and not from a compactor. But as mentioned earlier, there's this issue where we're trying to propagate sound from a particular source or a location to where the, where the homeowners are. And so you can't draw, you know, direct correlations with it. The, the purpose of that study was to demonstrate that the sound, that the fence, the PVC fence was going to provide some type of sound attenuation. Our study was, the study I was involved with was just to document what the sound levels were from the compactor and at the property line without being on somebody else's side of the property. So we tried to take measurements at a location representative of the property line with the understanding that we can't be right up against the fence itself, because from proper acoustic procedures, you need to be a certain distance away from that fence so that you're not getting reflective sound off of that sort of flat surface. So the selection of the 66-foot distance was sort of equivalent to what the background or what the property line would be right at the fence itself.
So the 90 then would have been well into the butter properties?
The 90 was right at the fence itself. And so it wasn't on the, it's always on the, on the market basket side of the fence.
Okay. So here's, let me just speak to the board for a moment. You know, here's what I think we should do, and I want to hear from you guys about whether you concur to. I think we need to have more data in order for Wayne and the VHB acoustic folks to properly evaluate it. I think we need to have measurements at Detling, and I think we need to have attended measurements, so we have an actual granular understanding of what the data means. What do you guys think about that?
So when we first got this, I did a little deep dive into like CDC and EPA and World Health Organization sound, you know, sound information about both annoyance and speech limiting interference. And, you know, the whole range of things. And my main concern is, okay, so this compactor wasn't supposed to be there. It wasn't, I don't even remember the details. It wasn't on the plans. Is that it? Is that it was a mistake? That it was just supposed to be a dumpster, a plain dumpster, and then the grocery store required a compactor, right?
Natalie, I'm not sure if we ever got a clear answer. And obviously, the applicant can comment now on why it wasn't clearly indicated that the, the block shown on the plan was a compactor. I don't know if it was, you know, the intent was a dumpster and a compactor was required. I don't know if a compactor was required all along and just not indicated on the plan. I'm not sure if we ever got an answer. If anyone has any information on that from the capital group, that maybe they could share that for Natalie's benefit. I just wanted to clarify, Natalie, that I'm not sure we got a straight answer on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Wayne, I, I didn't bring those plans here. Now, I thought we were just talking about sound tonight. I'd have to talk with the engineer to see what's on the plan and what really isn't, to tell you the truth. I mean, that, that was kind of dealt directly with them on that, so I need to do a little bit of digging on that.
Well, the only reason I ask is because the problem is the sound, right? And I actually love that someone put a muffler over it. I think that that's great. If there's a way that we can solve this problem, then we should solve it. If a thicker muffler can be built that allows the butters to enjoy their outside space to, let's say, let's say what the EPA says, less than 55 decibels for outdoor activities that do not have speech interference or annoyance, right? So I don't know. I'm just saying, like, yeah, maybe we need to look at what Wayne's guy says about this, but the point is, this is a problem. And we're all smart people and can come up with a solution. It's not.
I, that's why I think we just need real more data.
Yes, I just, I, I, I'm sure that the, the grocery store people are frustrated at the thought of, you know, not having their compactor, and that's not what we want, because we want you to prosper. But, you know, this needs to be solved, so let's come up with a solution.
So Andrew, I'm not sure it's 100% covered in the suggestion that you had for more data, but I would like to understand the cumulative time that it's on. And I'd like to understand how it turns on and why, and whether that's controllable. Say, we wanted to say, okay, it can only be 10 times a day. Is that a thing that can happen? Or is this thing just going to run by itself, no matter what we want?
So, Bill, inside the building, this is where they bring all the cardboard from the, the food and whatnot products. This is the recycled cardboard. They bring it to this location. There's a door inside the building, like a three-by-three door. They load the cardboard boxes in there, and there's a key that they turn on when, when the load area is full, they turn the key on, and it pushes it into the compactor that resets. And then other employees come and eat down their cardboard, and then they turn the key. So depending on the time of the day of deliveries and their unpacking and everything else, you can't have all these boxes in the building and becomes a hazard. So they, they, you know, they want to get them in the compactor and out of the building.
Okay, well then, I still don't quite know how to figure out how long this thing's running.
That's why I think
It would be nice to know how many times the keys turned.
Right. Well, every time it gets full, they can't put any more boxes in it. They turn the key, and it cycles, and it resets itself, enables you to put more boxes in it. And once it's full, you do it again.
Right, but that would have been cool to know before the sound guys had to try to guess at how many times.
That's why I think what I'm trying to get, I think the attended measurement would get us that sort of information. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, it seemed like it would at least be more accurate, maybe, because you'd know specifically that a DB reading of, let's say, 57 dBs was taken when that thing was actually cycling, and there was no truck next to it.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. So we would have a real, and theoretically, if they're there the whole time, you would know the number of times that it cycled during, you know, a given hour or a given day. Right?
If they were asked to record that specifically versus just watch the sound meter. You have to ask the question correctly for the people.
Right, so I think
It's activated and the duration of activation. And that would be a manual observation. I don't think there were automatic recordings can get that.
Correct. That's the attended factor.
Yeah.
Mark, is that correct? Would we, you know, would you be noting the number of times it cycled, any, any equipment cycled? The duration of those, the number of times a truck showed up, the duration it was there, those sorts of things during the course of any attended measurement?
Yes, that's correct, right.
Is the, Norman, is the obviously, it's not going to go automatically. Somebody turns it on, so the, the timing may be different. And so on. Is the cycle the same duration, though? Like each time?
Yeah, the cycle, the cycle of run on that compactor is approximately a minute and a half. It might be minute 39 seconds. Something like that. But yeah, the cycles are all, always the same.
Okay, well, I'm going to restate my recommendation that I think we should get attended measurements, measurements at Detling in order to have a fuller picture of this data, and that data then to be reviewed by Wayne's acoustic folks. That makes sense to all the other members of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the most important thing is, what does it sound like to the people at Detling?
Right, that's what I'm saying. We need a measurement there.
That, and that's what I'm saying. We, would, would you people up at Detling have any problem with these people setting up their instruments up there at your lot line?
I would welcome that, and I would encourage careful placement of that sound monitoring equipment, because most of our houses, the living areas of our houses are above the fence line because of the slope in the area. So they can't put the sound monitoring equipment like on ground level. Because that's not an accurate representation for what we can hear from our decks and our first and second floors.
Where would you like them placed, Chris? Where?
I would think on our decks. Well, I think our deck and Michael Hughes, are you on this call? I think Michael Hughes's deck makes sense also, but I'm sure the sound engineers can do that. Peter, do you have a deck or?
I'd want one on the deck and I'd want one on the ground, because I'm closer, closer to ground level. Yeah. That area.
Well, let me ask this in terms of this placement question. Wayne, would it be, would it work for one of the VHB acoustic guys to participate or to help cite these as part of the process?
I'm sure we, I could have someone out there to look at that to see what, what points made sense. I mean, you know, a non-educated person relative to noise, I mean, maybe on the top of the fence or the deck, I think would probably be a good spot. But I could certainly have someone go out there when they're getting ready to place it, and we could try to coordinate that so that they could pick a logical place that made sense for everybody.
Okay, I think that that might be a good course of action to get one of our own experts out there to make sure that, you know, everything's sort of, you know, mutually agreed on placement. Would that sort of meet the concerns of the residents that are here this evening?
For start, yep.
Because I, I just want to get us, you know, the right information so that we can do the right assessment. That's what we're, I think, talking about right now tonight. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that. And I just ask as fellow citizens of Maynard and neighbors to, you know, we need some relief. And if this will help that process to help eliminate the, the constant noise and volume of noise we're hearing, yes, I totally would support that. Alright, so
Is there a way to put the measurer, the, the thing that measures the noise on the top of the fence is, can it be attached there or no?
But if I may, before we continue to go down this path of figuring out all the details, I really would appreciate VHB's full technical input. From a procedural standpoint, that's what I first then, after we received that information, if there are plans that need to be developed further for additional data gathering, we can do it at that time so that it's comprehensive and holistic. I, I don't want to discuss the details of all locations and any other data investigations that need to occur at this time. I want to follow the correct procedures, so we do this the right way. If there are no other public comments at this time related to other matters, Andrew, I would propose that I would like to continue this hearing for another time.
Yeah, that's certainly what we're trying to move to. Chris, would are you indicating you'd like VHB to perform a peer review of the information that we have thus far? And then explore additional data gathering? You know, or do you think this can possibly be, I think this could be wrapped together?
I am hesitant to do anything else without technical input, and here's why. Ad hoc decisions to gather additional data without a technical expert reviewing runs the risk of having to do it all over again.
Well, that's why I'm encouraging active involvement of VHB's acoustic folks in this process and in terms of determining the next, you know, having into the data gathering.
Yes, until that expert reviews what we have thus far, I don't see standpoint how he can advise any further without reviewing first.
Okay. I mean, I, you know, I can see very definite flaws in the data. We need to have additional data, but I hear your point as well.
Certainly, I agree. And I am, what I'm saying is
No, I, I hear what you're saying, Chris. I get it. I get it. It's, it's the prudent course. You know, make sure that we are, you know, ticking the right boxes in the right order, not missing anything or, or, you know, forcing rework, which is the last thing one wants to do.
Exactly. No rework, please. Thank you.
Right. Okay, so
I mean, one suggestion, I guess, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that to not, not make the residents have to, you know, live with this any longer than they have to. Maybe I can get my, my expert to review this, you know, later this week, the first part of next week. And at the same time, the capital group and Mr. Wallace's company can schedule some other testing, and we can have, VHB can have some input into really what that is. Or we could just, we can come back to the board again and talk about this and then propose a revised solution. I fully understand Chris's position on this. So that's just, that's just an option to maybe save a little bit of time, but it's entirely up to the board.
And Andrew, it goes back to you, of course, but if, if I'm fine and comfortable with Wayne and Bill Nemser and others discussing offline to help develop a plan based partly on what we're hearing from, from community input.
Right, so VHB can develop some input, you know, review the materials, and then contribute to the development of the next steps offline without going back to the board. So they have data that's based on VHB's initial review of this. And then we can reassemble, reconvene this hearing with new data that'll enable us to actually move toward resolution. So if my fellow board members concur, I'd like to suggest that that be the next step and continue this hearing.
Would you like to continue it to a date certain? Andrew, I hear what Chris is saying, and I hear what Wayne is saying, but I, for the, their butters, I think the concern is to get a resolution as quickly as we can.
I do, I agree with you, Jim, and I do think we should set a date for this, but it should be one that is reasonable, and we can make sure that both, you know, VHB and the other engineering firm and the applicants have time to complete the requests that we're going to make of them. Bill, when's our, when, what do we have coming up over the next couple of scheduled meetings?
We have on the 26th, which is our next one, we have I think we just said, we may have zoning bylaw reviews, but it's pretty light.
I propose we file it for that date, and we can always continue with it.
And to be clear, that, I know we, sometimes we interchange hearing and meeting. This is not a hearing. This is a meeting, so we can
I'm sorry.
Right. Well, the difference is the advertising.
I just, yeah, I default to
I know.
Doing the more rigorous thing. Okay, Wayne, in your opinion, and Mark, in your opinion, is what we're discussing possible for the 26th meeting?
I mean, from my, my perspective, I think yes, but I really need to defer to
I understand, I understand. I'm just, this is your opinion.
Yep.
You're not the acoustics guy. Absolutely, you know, all the asterisks are there. Mark?
So is that a question for me? I'm sorry.
To both of you, I was saying, you know, since this is going to be a collaborative effort between your firms. You know, 26th, is that a reasonable deadline? You know, and we'd need to get that information a few days before then.
I guess it's, it's possible. You know, the one thing I would caveat stuff with is, it's, a lot of this testing is weather dependent as well. We need to do it during, you know, conditions that we had like over the weekend, which were, you know, dry weather and light wind conditions. So that, that's, that's one of the caveats to the thing. But, but if, yeah, we can, you know, we've worked with VHB before, so, you know, I'm sure we can work something out. If we're doing testing for, I guess the question is, what's the duration of the testing? You know, this past time, we did two days worth of testing. If we're doing attended monitoring, you know, I would assume it'd be over a shorter period of time. And we can decide with VHB as to
Yeah, and, and we could probably even limit it to the times that, you know, we know from this data when the high points, you know, or when the trend is, right? We don't need some The trend is right, we don't need someone sitting there at three in the morning.
Right, exactly, right.
You know, so you should be able to identify the sort of target, the times that are uh. You know, above background or significantly above background.
Sure, understood.
I mean, I would, I I'll defer to Mr. Wallace, Mr. Chairman, but I think that. Looking at his data, he could look at that and basically come up with, you know, a couple of hour, two or three hour period where I think you'd be able to get. Enough data to be able to understand, you know, the 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 level of uh, readings that are actually occurring. Um, you know, at the property, uh, at at the properties in question over the.
Okay. Over the. Well, here's here's what I think we should do. Wayne, you know, your acoustic guys, take a look at this. Work with the engineering firm, figure out the testing plan. Let's target the twenty sixth. Be optimistic and and you know, while recognizing whether other factors may, you know, be out of our control. Um, but let's schedule this for the twenty sixth and uh, and shoot to make it then. Uh, respect, uh, you know, sort of the time factor and the residents uh. Inconvenience and and difficulties they're facing.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Of course you do.
I certainly understand that for someone to have to stand out there and like. Mark, oh, was that a truck? Oh, was that the compactor like that? Um, it's a fairly tedious and probably somewhat expensive job, but. If if we were measuring within such a short window of like just a couple of hours. Um, are we simply measuring the volume of an of any cycle? Because no amount of that. Level of increased noise is acceptable. Or is part of what the board would be considering a relationship between? The decibel increase. And the number of minutes it's running at the course of the day. Because I I would argue that for a very short window of monitoring. There could be behavior patterns that were changed within the store that could. Inadvertently also impacted. So is it simply the decibel level or is it the decibel level and the frequency that you will be considering together?
I think part of the attended monitoring is to understand the frequency, especially at the peak times, right? Which are easily identified from this data.
Yeah, I got disagree.
And so I think what I'm saying is that for such a short window. Behavior patterns could change if they knew they were being monitored and given that the. Um, you know, we're we're at a range here during their open hours of, you know, at a low of. Three to a high of twenty nine, simply picking a two hour window feels like it's not.
I don't really. Two hours, but. All I'm saying is it doesn't need to be twenty four hours.
And personally for me, no, it doesn't. I they get a certain amount of cardboard delivered to the store. They're going to have to get rid of it somehow. They're not gonna fool me by not doing it during that hour that we're there. I'm, we're not that stupid, so don't worry about that. Like, we're, we understand. The volume of cardboard is going to be the same over a twenty four hour period.
I'm still concerned that I'm interested in the cumulative amount of time that thing is activated during.
And that's what the.
And I'm stuck on, you know, maybe somebody else is gonna figure out something better, but I'm stuck on, you have to do it for at least twelve hours. Seven to seven minimum. Understand how many times that thing turns on. Maybe there's a simple way to monitor how many times that thing turns on. But I haven't heard that yet, but maybe the team will figure it out. But two hours ain't gonna do it for me.
I I don't know where this two hours even came into or from, but I think it should be lengthier than that. Um, but I'm just saying that it it, you know, doesn't need to be twenty four hours continuous attended.
And are we doing attended monitoring, Mr. Chairman? Um. You know, at multiple locations or are we just doing it at a select look at a particular location?
Well, it seems to me if you have, if you're attending it at one point and that person is saying, you know. The the compactor is on now. You don't need to have someone else standing at another point to also say the compactor is on now, do you?
No, I'm not saying that. I know there were some mentions of some of the, some of the neighbors about their, you know, allowing us to be on their property to take measurements. I I would think we want to take a look, have it at a particular location that that seems to be. The most representative of the neighborhood. And or or maybe in our worst case location, however you want to put it. And so that we happen, so we we have. A person there if we're gonna be there for extended period of time. Uh, rather than trying to, you know, jump or have multiple people, I guess, at at different locations.
Yeah, I. I'll defer to your expertise on this. I wouldn't think you want to have multiple people at multiple locations since. You know, the events that are measuring are singular. But I do think you'll want to have multiple measuring points. Um, you know, whether or not you have a device on the deck or a ground level at some of the butter spaces. Uh, whether you have a device simultaneously with an an individual. Twenty nine property that is uh, measuring, you know, and marking the, you know, coming and goings of trucks. Cycling of the compactor, that sort of thing. So I think you'll, you will want to have it measured. I don't think it particularly matters where that person is as long as they can. You know, adequately understand the activity occurring at the rear of the store. But I think you'll want to measure from multiple points, but I also. Caveat all of those by saying that I defer to VHB's expertise. And helping you make those decisions as you move through this process.
Understood.
Do we need to submit a motion for a continuance, Phil Nemsor on this or?
It's not a hearing.
It's not a hearing, so.
We just need to say move, go forth and, you know, do as you're told.
What I I would, my suggestion would just be uh, for courtesy of everybody here to say we're gonna, we'll uh, we'll. Provide a status update on the twenty sixth. If we have everything, great. They're gonna try, that's the goal. We understand there's certain things that are gonna be out. You know, when you're using consultants, we had that we discussed this before. You know, that things can go on and and it may be delayed, but the goal would be to try to have the information on the twenty sixth. But either.
Goal is the twenty sixth, but I'll understand if there's been a big snowstorm, then it might be a challenge.
Yeah, I I I just don't know, right? But yeah, I think that would be the way to, and just for the courtesy, you know, but. And we'll post it. And I'm sure the butter is all understand that if it's not ready, then we'll we'll punt it to the next meeting.
Good. All right, I believe that draws us to the close of item number four.
All right.
Thank you all for attending.
Mr. Chairman, when is the, when is the issue of the um, delivery hours requested change going to be?
That'll be submitted to the board uh, this week. So it'll be, the modification is gonna be submitted this week and then from there we'll be moving forward.
So we'd address it at the next session as well.
Um, no, you won't be able to because of notification.
Right, this is a totally different, I I deliberately wanted to keep these two separate issues because it's two different processes. Um, this uh, the um. The changing the hours is a public hearing. And that is a a a farm.
And we don't have time between now and the twenty sixth.
No, no, so I would keep the, but um, we do, well, capital group said if they um. Submit the package um, in the next um, week or so, we'll be able to put a calendar together for. A timeline for when it would come, but it would be, I would recommend board consider independent this issue.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They're two separate issues. I was just saying that, you know. Would it be possible to, you know, but it sounds like not from a scheduling standpoint? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, residents. Appreciate all your participation and effort. All right. Uh.
Chief, still here?
Get back to my agenda. Uh, fire, fire station. Fencing. Let's go. You have a presentation from a.
We do. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Mr. Nemsor and Mr. Amico. My name is Steven Ventresco with Niche Engineering. I'm here with Brian Kramer also from Niche. Um, and we also have Alicia Monks who's part of the owner's project manager and then we have representatives from the architect or in woodier. We're back in front of you as part of the conditions um, for the fire station, which was approved um, in front of. By the board, I believe in two thousand nineteen. Uh, maybe we spilled into early twenty twenty. And we are also approved by the Conservation Commission. We have a stormwater permit, um, which is in effect. Um, as you know or may not know, the product was put on hold for various reasons. But now we're back in front of you um, with a a bid date towards the end of the month. And again, as part of the conditions that we had with the board. Um, we were asked to come back with um, a a. A planting plan um, and a um. Idea of what the fence would be between the butter at thirty fourth Sudbury and the fire station project. Um, so that's where we're in front of you um, to discuss that tonight. Um, and hopefully we get, uh, you're okay. I will share that we did um, meet with the chair, Greg. Um, and we did review, uh, went through a round of revisions um, on the plan and so, uh, we did. Submit this rendered plan that you're about to see to the town planner and to and to Greg for review. Um, earlier today, um, and so now we're gonna start, uh, Brian Kramer will now present um, the discussions that we had and and. What the outcome of the um, and the results of that plan and and look for your, forward to your comments and ultimate approval. So. Brian, if you will, thank you.
Sure, thank you all. Um, again, my name is Brian Kramer. I'm a planner and landscape designer with Niche Engineering. Um, so uh, to catch you up on basically where we started in twenty nineteen, um, changes that have gone on over the last. Um, well, two years, but really over the last uh, few months um, to respond to um. Some butter concerns and really the the um, visibility and screening between the two properties. Um, you'll see on the screen here is the proposed um, new fire station. Um, uh, drive access aisle up a um, church place, which is a a paper street essentially, but. Uh, to get us back into the parking lot here. A uh, small retaining wall.
It is just, just, can I just, it is not a paper street, it's a driveway.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Tony. Um, Mr. Lisa, a uh. Alright, so it is a driveway.
It's so.
To the benefit of uh, the fire lot, fire station lot, correct?
No, so the the abutting driveway or the what was a paper road. Is now a driveway entrance into a parking lot that is essentially in a kind of a courtyard. You see how the buildings? Form an L. Uh, and in the old picture, there are a bunch of cars kind of parked all over the place. Um, that's now a, um, you know, an asphalt parking lot goes back. A little bit farther than the line you just drew, but yeah.
And we're in there, okay.
Yep.
And yeah, what what you're seeing on the screen here is um, a little bit dated. It's it's the latest aerial imagery, but it doesn't show the. The current configuration of the.
Such such a, such a bummer. I mean, I can send you a picture if you want.
You know what? We gotta get a drone out there. Sorry about that, but um.
Just kidding.
So um, what we have before you tonight is um. Here, I'll show you the uh, twenty nineteen plan. So um. In essence, what the board saw was a um. This is the comparison between the two. So on the top here um, was the twenty nineteen version. Um. We uh, we're intending to install the retaining wall, um, restore loman seed at the top of wall. So that great difference between the abutting parcel and the um, driveway is is approximately four feet. Um, it varies up and down the driveway. Um, it's, you know. Um, meets grade at both ends, but um, at its highest point, I believe it's about four feet. Um, and then a forty two inch, I got that right. Um, I'm sorry, forty eight inch uh, black aluminum fence. On on the top of the wall. Um, so the back of the wall is the property line. So the the project would be restoring essentially what was there. The revised plan essentially keeps that fence uh, on top of the wall. And um, is proposing to install uh, new plantings, essentially vegetative screening. On the butter's property. To provide, you know, basically some canopy trees, um, some understory plantings, some vegetative, um. You know, a buffer between um, the two buildings and and the driveway. Um, so there's some evergreen shrubs in there, some understory shrubs that are deciduous, um, some ground covers and then we're um. Loming and seeding, uh, basically any impacted or any areas that we're um, and we'll anticipate we'll need to. Uh, do some regrading on the abutting part property. Um. Got a um. You know, cross section that looks at basically if if you are at the um. New fire station looking south um, at the butters um. Building, this is approximately what the um, retaining wall will look like. Um, you know, with it with the vegetative screening. Above, it's it's not gonna be a continuous screen. Um, you know, with discussion with the chair, we we felt like. Uh, it was probably more appropriate to do a more naturalized landscaping approach here as opposed to a continuous uh, row of of um, a single species. Um, that the chair and we felt like it was a better um, approach to do a more varied. Planting palette here, so. I'll leave it at that. Any questions from the board? Um, we have, you know, plenty of materials on the fence type for um, the wall. I'll leave it to you.
One comment I'll make, and this is just passed on from Greg, is uh, suggestion that the two uh, large honey locusts be swapped for oaks.
Thank you, yeah. Um, yeah, we did, we did receive that comment earlier tonight. Yeah, I I think.
Yeah, and and if I may, um, Mr. Chair, the um, we. Just so the board knows and and members of the public who are listening, the the fire chief um, has been in contact with the butter, Mr. Lisa, and they've had. A couple of conversations about the approach that we would take and so what you're seeing is also culmination of of those discussions. Um, in addition to discussions with with Greg.
The one question that came to my mind when I first saw these drawings was. The option to choose this uh, very widely spaced fence that provides a lot of transparency. Can anyone speak to that and how that decision was arrived at?
I think it was the the type of fence that, yeah, as you can see in the images here. That we liked and that we've used in or been a part of with other projects. Um, it it's a, it it's not a fence. Excuse me, that it, you know, it's a common fence, if you will, so if something, if a section needed to be replaced. Um, we're not looking for something custom.
Sure, I understand that. I was just, uh, I was more to the, uh, you know, it doesn't provide a lot of, you know, visual screening.
Oh, I see.
Is that something that was jointly arrived at between the butter and uh, the applicant?
Yes, that that's correct. Discussions with the applicant, discussions with with Greg and um, yep.
Butter mentioning that. Could you clarify that the butter has signed off on this?
Uh, I'm actually, I'm here.
Yeah.
I'm on the call. Uh, I, we haven't discussed the fence, but I actually love it. Um, I have it at another commercial property, have the identical fence. As a frontage piece in another home of mine. Um, I'd rather, you know, I I I feel like if it's a solid fence, you're gonna be looking at the fence and not the landscape. So um, I'm a, I'm a big fan of what was proposed and. Hope that's what everybody goes with.
That's fine. I I just wanted to understand, think between it and make sure that. Um, you know, the two impacted parties were in agreement on it.
Yep.
So Andrew, can we clarify that the image that we're looking at now, is that actually the detail sheet that's referenced in the plan or is this an example of similar?
It, uh, the image at the top left here is the, an image from the manufacturer of the um, well. One of the three uh, products that um, are in the the product. Product specification manual. Um, I believe that's right, Steve, right? Like, I mean, this is the.
That's correct. The detail that we show, sorry, Brian, is that fence that you're pointing out right now on screen.
Okay, my point is. We don't have the detail on our board docs. The plan calls out a detail sheet, C five oh five. Do you have that sheet available to look at?
I don't have the full plan set up, um, but I could. Give me a moment here, I'll, I'll pull it up.
Uh, I can take a look too, but I believe that was the, this detail for that was was on the approved plans that the board approved back in two thousand nineteen.
Oh, that, I if they're on that, I have that on there on the board docs. If not, you can mail it to me, I can pop it up.
Okay, so you're saying this is the exact same fence that was detailed in the approved plan?
That's my recollection. We're gonna take it, we're looking right now.
Digging, yeah. Say sheet five oh five?
Yeah, that's the call out beyond your.
So I believe that's the detail I was referencing.
The same fence. It's not quite the same. It seems like more than four feet between the posts, but anyways, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're going to approve it, we should actually approve something that's written down that we can.
Got it. Why don't we circle back on that then? You know, if this is what was approved. You know, from that manufacturer, I took a picture from their website. So if I grab the wrong picture, that's that's a mistake on my end. But I, this is the intent. And if what you're seeing in the image here is more than four feet, which I agree with you, it looks like it's a little over. I admit that's, that's, you know, my fault and, you know, an innocent mistake. I I think if it was six feet here, I don't know if it really changes the intent.
Right. I was going to say that picture might be something that is custom, a little bit different than what the standard detail is. But that's, that's the look that we're going for.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the look. It's just, this is a condition on the permit that we have to sign off on. I want something physical to sign. I want a plan sheet that actually, this is it.
I guess the, I guess we did provide that. And I guess it was, it's part of the the approved plan set. And so we're coming back to the board to say, this is what, this is what we're doing. Are you okay with it? This is the, this is the image of the fence that we want to use. Sounds like you want, it sounds like you want another plan.
I just, I'm wondering if I could just make a comment, maybe Steve, maybe just putting a revision on the plan sheet that showed the fence and indicate the three model numbers. Three types and model numbers that we, that the board will approve, understanding that this is a public project and you're going to have three different options.
Yeah.
Then just, and then you could just resubmit this really for the board's records. I don't think the board needs to act on it or anything, but I'll defer to Bill on that.
Yeah, that that makes sense.
I agree with that approach. And it sounds like we all agree with the general temper of of what we're looking at. This is for the records. We want to get it right.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I agree. I think that's a fair request. We can make that change.
Yeah. And Andrew, I have one other comment I noticed on the comparison of the approved plans and the proposed that we've lost some landscaping alongside the fire station building. Is that okay? Do we have to act on that, approve it, or can we just ignore it?
You're referring to the sort of indent there and then at the back of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can comment on that, particularly on this northeast portion here. That was done to accommodate an ADA slope issue, making sure that we got up into the parking lot and really the accessible path into the building entry at the back. That the major change in 2019 to 2021 is that the accessible route, I believe, changed to the back of the building. Steve, you can catch me if I'm wrong on that, but that this is still an accessible route at this entry here, you see the little door, but there's also an accessible route at the back. So that necessitated, you know, but the concrete in here and making sure that that accessible route had enough clear width. And then we just carried the, you know, same visual, you know, all the way down the walk. That was the only reason for taking those out.
And I also think because of that small area, the viability of those plants there, in addition to discussions with Greg about changing the plant material types, he did have comments on that necessitated for some changes. So I think functionally to remove the the plantings in that little notch makes sense. And then for the changes that you see on the, on the left side of the screenshot there, based on conversations with Greg.
All right. So my, my question to Bill Nemser is, is that something we have to, you know, formally say major minor, we can just ignore it and it's all good?
I would be, I think the way to do it would, since it's, we're here and it doesn't require a public hearing. I would just acknowledge that it was, if the board fills minor modification based on the previous plan that was presented to accommodate ADA access and it doesn't really affect anything else on the board's decision for the project, but I think it couldn't hurt.
I understand the ADA at the end, but that little nook is pestering me because it just seems like something needs to happen there. But I understand that plants also may not really be viable there. And that could just be a, you know, something that turns into an eyesore. But that's just musing. It just.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, just understanding that that's some little alcove area or something that was previously proposed to be planting planted. I can only imagine what may happen five or 10 years from now. We, everyone may wish they didn't put them there.
Oh, no, I agree. I think that it's probably not viable, really. It's south facing. Plants are going to dry out and die there, but you know, extreme watering. I agree. I just, you know, I wish there was some way of doing something there to, you know, visually offset that alcove because it just, I think it's just going to seem strange, but that's just me being persnickety, I guess. All right. I understand those changes. Bill, does that, do those explanations meet your approval?
Yeah, I'm fine. Yeah, we just, you know, if we act on this, we just.
Yeah.
And well, and. But bless it, basically. That's fine.
Yeah, we'll do a minor, we can, you know, we'll find that it's a minor modification. Okay. Other members of the board, comments, questions?
Can I ask a couple of questions or maybe?
Of course.
Yeah. Thanks. My name's Tony, by the way. So that retaining wall that's going to get cut in along the property line slash the driveway. Obviously, all the existing trees that are there are going to have to come down, of which there are a very large number. Or relatively speaking in the space. And one, one concern I'd love to be very attentive to when that process starts is given that the driveway is so close and you're going to have to take out the stumps. I'm worried we're going to rip the driveway up. And, and then the same question or same concern longer term. That retaining wall that's going to go in. Making sure the drainage behind that wall is done properly, which is a common area of cheating. When something like that goes in to me is very important because that drainage behind that wall, if not done correctly, can basically move sort of under the driveway and cause heaving and I'd obviously love to make sure that doesn't happen.
So we are providing a drain at the, behind the wall as part of the project. In our documents, the geotechnical engineer, because the soils are so sandy in this area, has recommended that we do not or that one is not included, but we will include one to make sure that it is properly drained.
So what, what's on the plans? Is that, is that what you're showing me?
Sorry, hold on. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here. Wayne, can you just comment on how this proceeded over time with review from a stormwater standpoint? I know it's hard to go back in the memory, but I just want to make sure that we understand what has occurred from a review standpoint.
So I guess, I guess holistically, you know, the, the project came before the planning board as a site plan approval bill. Is that correct, Mr. Nemser? And we conducted a review based on the project meeting site plan criteria as well as mass stormwater criteria. And it also sounds like the project has gone before Concom for stormwater permit. And, you know, the applicant revised the plans based on our comments. And ultimately, we were satisfied that they had addressed our comments. I'm hoping that's what you're looking for, Chris.
Yeah. And then one more final detail. Did, did those reviews and those plans include stormwater considerations on the butter properties side of the wall?
I'll be candid with you. I honestly don't remember.
Yeah, and that's a fair response.
Steve or Brian may, because they understand what, what drainage areas were looked at, but I can't remember whether that was included or not.
We, we did look at the abutting properties, the way that things are sloped and the way that the runoff is, the majority of the runoff from thirty four goes into Sudbury or towards Sudbury, I should say. There's very little run on from Sudbury and onto our, or to the fire station project site.
Understanding the topography and seeing it myself, what Steve said makes sense to me.
Okay, thank you. And.
As long as these are here in the plans, you know, this is really an issue for Rick, you know, in terms of when they build it to make sure that it's in compliance, so that Mr. Lisa's fears do not come to pass.
And thank you for your patience, Brian and Steve, and I believe any further discussion on this, I would appreciate your input on how you plan to mitigate this concern, if it's a real concern from your point of view.
I'm sorry, mitigating the, the water behind the, or providing drainage behind the wall?
Yes.
Yeah. So well, as you can see in the detail there, you know, we'll provide some granular fill, backfill with a, with a pipe at the bottom. And then that will infiltrate into the ground and move the water away from, you know, the back of that wall. And like I said, because it's a sandy material in the area and groundwater is relatively deep at this location. We're not anticipating any design, you know, any problems with water hanging up either at the base of the wall or the side of the wall. Because we are adding that granular material. Again, we've had input from the geotechnical engineer who, who offered his opinion that any drainage behind the wall is not necessary and we're adding it anyway as a redundant feature.
And these, and these design features were part of the plans submitted that have been approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's fun. We're looking at the February nineteen, twenty nineteen.
I thought that was the case. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
That's a good clarification.
Okay.
Steve, I have, just to ask one more question. I'm sorry.
Okay, please.
So the other thing we've done on the property, you guys may or may not know, I own a landscape contracting business. We do a lot of retaining walls, which is why I was just asking the question and thank you for that detail. It's exactly what, what I was looking for. So I also, we, we've installed an irrigation, a small kind of residential irrigation system that runs off the off the house. And I would love to, at my own cost, when this is happening, irrigate the areas, particularly the grass, the lumen seed that's going to go in. So that it kind of comes in like the rest of the property. Because right now, you know, if you look on the right side, everything's nice and lush and developing well and everything on the left side. Obviously anticipating the project's going to have to go on, you know, relatively dead and brown. And I'd like to bring that left side. You know, over the hump, so to speak, and make it look like the rest of the property. And I just would love the opportunity to work with someone again at my own cost. Went before that goes in to put some irrigation, to run the irrigation across the driveway and put it on the, the material.
Yeah, that, that's, well, I can't, it sounds good to me. I'll be honest. And so I think what we need to do is coordinate with the OPM to make sure that as this gets, once this is about to be installed, that we engage you at the appropriate time before that installation so that you can put those lines in.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's fine, Mr. Lee. So when construction starts, I will certainly put you in touch with our onsite rep. Who will be there all day, every day, who you'll can have these kinds of conversations with and tee up for timing on installation of the irrigation.
Yeah. Who is the general contractor that's going to be?
We have to go out to bid first. It's an excellent question. To be determined soon.
I, I guess I, I, I might be better to ask this question now. Would anybody, would it be a problem if I reached out to the general contractor and asked to be put on the bid list for the landscaping work, which is what my business is?
No, that's fine. The project is going to go out to, what I recommend you do is when you go out to the project's going out to bid next week, you will see, I can send you a link if you want of where the bid information is and you can see who's pulling the bids. And you're welcome to submit your bids to those people because they're going to pull that information together at the very beginning.
Okay.
I hate to interrupt. I'd just like to say like, this is getting a little outside the purview of our discussion here. I encourage you to continue collaborating offline. I think that's fantastic, but I'd like to back to the refocus the discussion.
Fair enough.
So Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is essentially an update and I don't believe there's any actions to be taken except to find minor modification for the removal of the landscape elements that we discussed a lot directly alongside the building.
That is, that is correct. I do have a question for Steve. I want to make sure that we have this. When we, we gave our approval to this, the board did on, on the conditions of approval, there was a set of plans that was to be dated, that was dated March twelfth, twenty nineteen. So the plans that will be ultimately submitted here will have that date with a, with the revision date adding the fence specs on it. Is that correct?
Correct. It'll have the, the detail will have the three different types of manufacturers on it.
And that will be what's ultimately signed then. Okay. All right.
And that'll include the, all this updated landscaping as well, right?
That's correct. Well, right. That's correct.
So the revision dates would be March twelfth and then whatever, and then whatever you do this. Okay.
Correct. And so if I, if I may, the, the bid date and Alicia will correct me, I believe is the twentieth of January. I'd like to, to put that as the date. And if it slides, we'll let you know, but want to keep it as the bid date. I'm sorry, twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth.
Okay. So we'll put January twenty fifth as the, the revision date on the plans and those will, we'll send you a set, Bill. So you'll probably get something the week of the twenty fifth.
Okay, thank you.
And let me ask my fellow board members, are you have additional questions or concerns that you want to address? Or are you prepared to make a finding on a major minor modification for the change in these landscape elements to accommodate the ADA grading slope?
I just want to clarify, we should probably do that, but I believe we also should proactively approve the fence since that's condition D of the permit and it requires our approval. So I think we should formally do something and perhaps we have to make a contingent on those plan updates, but that's fine. You know, good, build the sign off on that, but I think we have to.
Okay, so two actions.
Good.
Okay. Well, Bill, you want to make a motion on the fence?
Sure, I'll motion to approve the fence design as discussed and subject to conditional approval of Bill Nemser receiving the updated drawings.
I'll second that. All in favor and I'll call the roll. Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Andrew is a yes as well. So that was moved by Bill, seconded by Andrew, and the vote was unanimous. All right, I'll now move that we find that the changes to the south, the landscaping on the south side of the fire station, the north, at the western, at the eastern end of the sidewalk to accommodate the ADA and to remove the vegetation in the small niche constitutes a minor modification to the site plan.
I'll second that.
All right, that was moved by Andrew, seconded by Jim. All in favor and I'll call the roll again. Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
And Andrew's yes as well. So unanimous.
I believe that's it. I think we are closed out with the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thanks everyone again for your patience with the, the delay this evening.
Yeah, Andrew, I want, I just know if we can blame that delay on the board selection. It's a hundred percent their fault.
Oh, I, I, I would, do we need to make a motion on that?
I think it's a consensus.
I'm in full agreement, Bill. All right, so that being said, and it being nine thirty.
Andrew, I have a, I have a question, please.
Please, Jim.
Uh, yeah, uh, Bill, not getting into any specifics here, but we had an executive session some, several weeks ago, and I'm just wondering what's going, what is happening on that litigation i- issue that you could share with us?
I met today with Adam, Mark Bobrowski, and the applicants. We went over the missing items that we had identified. One issue is got the attorneys where they want to meet and discuss it offline, and they plan on sending out responses to everything within the next week. We're going to schedule an executive session. We have one tentatively scheduled for our next meeting anyway, on the twenty-sixth. We may have one before. Anything else, I'm probably speaking out of turn, but there's-
Well, I didn't want you to do that, Bill. I didn't want you to do that. I just want an update and, and how we're proceeding, but we, we, we're going to have an executive session either next week or the week after to discuss it further, right?
Yeah, and for the most part, I, I think we've narrowed it down. There's really one issue now, I think, so.
Good.
I'm optimistic, but you know how these things go, but.
Right. All right. So that being said, thank you all for your patience. Thank you, Wayne, Caitlin, Bill, Justin, fellow board members. I'm going to now move that we adjourn this meeting of the major planning board.
Any chance you could approve the twelve eight minutes? Has there been a chance to look at them?
Does everyone review the minutes?
Yeah, I have, but I have a comment on them.
All right, if there's, we're not going to do it. I move to adjourn the meeting of the major planning board.
Second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Bill? Natalie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Andrew, yes, unanimous. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everybody. I know. If, if you mailed to me, that would be great.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, I mean, let's, you know, let's clear it up next time, but I just don't, you know.
No, no, no problem.
Pile on. Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thank you all.
Good night, though.